Mr. Aho, will you call the roll please?
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mr. Solara.
Here.
Mr. Curtis.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Fabio.
Here.
And we are all here. If you would all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? All right. Well, good evening again and welcome to the students, staff, and families from Wilcox Primary, George G. Dodge, and Twinsburg High Schools. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for March 20th, 2019. I am Rob Felber and I'm honored to serve as the President of the Board of Education. Well, we made it, Spring Equinox. Twelve hours of light, twelve hours of dark. It's more sunshine from here on and as we head into spring break. And I know our students and staff have been working very hard and it's time to relax before that final push for the end of the school year. As for our schools and the students in our charge, I would want to discuss safety. The administration, along with our police and safety forces, recently conducted a canine search of Twinsburg High School. These searches, along with continuous community programs on positive behavior, internet safety, and drug and alcohol risk are all critical aspects of keeping our students safe. Superintendent Powers will address the more recent activity in the superintendent's report. I also want to give a huge thanks out to all those that attended the Blue Ribbon Schools Pancake Breakfast on March 9th. The event was a huge success, in part by the co-location of the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce Business Expo. We believe attendance was over eight hundred people. And speaking of upcoming renewal levies, note that your board administration continued to meet, study, and discuss the long-term financial health of the district. Your board, treasurer, and superintendent have once again determined to maintain our fiscal health, the levy should be renewed. This levy will be on the May ballot, is eight and a half percent of our district's budgeted operations, and is not a new tax. Please join us in this renewal on May 7th. Recent endorsements of this renewal levy come from the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, Twinsburg City Council, Twinsburg Education Association, and the Northeast Ohio Education Association. And now, seeing all the smiling faces of our students, we're reminded once again as why we're here. So I'll now turn the meeting over to Mrs. Powers for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families. It's so great to see everybody here this evening. We have so much to celebrate, as usual, so we're going to get to that very shortly, just a couple of announcements here. Big news is that kindergarten registration is soon to happen. Cannot believe the class of 2032 is just about ready to walk across the front doors of Wilcox Primary School. So for our parents who have little ones at home, I'm going to read something so that you know what you need to do to register your child for school. Parents of children who will be five at the beginning of August, so August 1st, 2019, are asked to visit the district website at www.twinsburg.k12.oh.us and then click on the "For Parents" tab, scrolling to access registration information. Once there, you'll be asked to create an account and then you'll be asked to complete the pre-registration information. And then you'll be able to schedule an appointment online. Kindergarten registration this year, families, is about a month earlier than it's usually. We usually have registration screening and appointments in May. And this year it's April 15th, 16th, and 17th, so it's right around the corner to think about it. And as usual, it will be held at the Twinsburg Community Center. So we want to thank the city of Twinsburg for once again hosting kindergarten registration for us. Again, April 15th, 16th, and 17th at the Twinsburg Community Center. And parents, it's just really important to know that you have to preregister for an appointment. It works like clockwork. Ms. Villa and her staff have this down like a dream. But we ask if you would please make sure that you are preregistered so that we don't keep you waiting or other families waiting as we screen our youngest tigers and get them ready for school. So welcome to our class of 2032. I say this is an exciting time of the year because the class of 2019 can't wait to get out the door and the class of 2032 can't wait to get in. So lots going on here in our school district. As Mr. Felber indicated, yesterday morning at about 9:30, we had a canine search over at Twinsburg High School. And we want to thank the city of Twinsburg, especially Officer Encarnacion, who is our canine unit officer here and his dog, along with Macedonia, Caja Falls, Stowe, Copley, and Garrettsville. And I also want to thank Dr. Hebert and her staff. When we do this kind of thing, it really takes a collaborative effort and that includes the participation of our students and our staff. And yesterday's drill went off in a very positive fashion, thankfully. The dogs were not able to locate anything that we have to be concerned about. It was a very good opportunity for us to revisit the need for us students to understand about making good choices and revisiting the whole conversation about safety and drug awareness. So we thank our partners here in town. We thank our officers. We thank the high school administration and our security staff for just a really good effort. And we also want to say we're very proud of Twinsburg High School and the students out there for making good choices. Congratulations to Mr. Ryan Bonnetz and our Twinsburg High School Symphonic Band, earning a superior rating at last weekend's OMEA State Contest. And the orchestra, I'm sorry, the band performed in Class A, which is highly difficult. And the superior rating is the highest rating a high school performing group can get from the OMEA. Also, congratulations to Mrs. Samantha Gossett and our Twinsburg High School Concert Band, earning an excellent rating last weekend as well. So we're very proud of all of our students and particularly proud of our performing arts last weekend. They did so well. And tomorrow morning, bright and early, our band and our orchestra will be heading to New York City. So it's going to be a wonderful weekend for them. We wish them safe travels and we can hardly wait to hear about their travels when they get back next week, actually after spring break at this point in time. So we have a lot to celebrate this evening and we want to not waste too much time in me talking. I want to invite up to the front here our principal from Wilcox Primary School, who's here to celebrate some outstanding Wilcox Tigers. Well, good evening, Ms. Villa.
Good evening, Mrs. Powers. Thank you. Hello, Board of Education. Mrs. Gutierrez is going to join me tonight to welcome our Wilcox Rocks students for March. And just so parents know, we get this opportunity every month to recognize some of our boys and girls who are good citizens, who work really hard, who are good friends, good role models, all of those things that makes Wilcox rock. So, boys and girls, what we're going to do is I'm going to call you out. Mrs. Gutierrez is going to help you shake all kinds of hands here. Mrs. Powers' hand, Mr. Curtis' hand. And then we're going to line up here and I know that you have some rocking things to say about your teachers too. So I'm going to read. I have to put my glasses on. Sorry. And Mrs. Gutierrez, if you can ask, because that one's going to get old. Okay. There we go. So our first Wilcox Rock student is Beatrice Jeffers. She's in Mrs. Kane's class. Mrs. Kane said, "Mrs. Kane has nominated Beatrice because she is a bright, shining star in the classroom. She's smart and always goes above and beyond with her effort. She's very thoughtful and kind to others. She notices friends in need and is the first to offer help or be their partner. Beatrice is honest and can always be counted on to tell the truth. It's a pleasure to have her alongside." Beatrice shared a little bit about Mrs. Kane. She said, "Mrs. Kane rocks because she reads to her students and teaches them how to read. She also helps her students with addition and subtraction. One time, Beatrice was struggling with writing a subtraction math sentence and Mrs. Kane helped her get it right. Beatrice says, 'Thank you for teaching us.'" Okay, next we have Riley Schmuck. Riley is here and Riley is new to Twinsburg this year. She's a first grader in Mrs. Ferrelllo's class. Riley Ferrelllo. Riley is a hard-working and a dedicated young lady. Coming from an all-Spanish-speaking school to a traditional first-grade classroom, Riley has persevered and has had tremendous success. She demonstrates random acts of kindness each day and makes her goal to be a good person and friend. Riley is well-mannered and comes to school with a smile on her face each day, excited to Mars. Mrs. Ferrelllo looks forward to watching her continue to grow the rest of this school year. And Mrs. Ferrelllo couldn't be here today, but Riley told us about her too. She said, "Mrs. Ferrelllo rocks because she is so nice. She always helps her students learn and also has stamp trouble." Riley remembers the first day of writing, she needed help with the words and Mrs. Ferrelllo helped her out. Riley says, "I'll miss you next year, Mrs. Ferrelllo." And next we have Austin Baker in Mrs. Zenz's class. Austin is a very kind, well-mannered little boy. He's always paying attention in class and raising his hand to participate in answering questions. Mrs. Zenz has enjoyed watching him grow. He's such a strong, confident reader. Austin is helpful, always takes others respectfully. He's a member of our school Smile Patrol and is a great role model for other students. Wilcox in room 144 rocks because of Austin. And Austin told us that Mrs. Zenz is always so helpful in class. She teaches her students how to do math and how to write. Whenever her students struggle with ideas for writing, she helps them out. Austin loves when Mrs. Zenz reads classic and fun stories that make learning fun. Austin says, "Thank you for a great year." And next we're going to invite some kindergarten students to come on up. So, well, we're going to bring Mrs. Ritz up. Come on up. This is Ritz's student. As she nominated this month is Jack Epplely. Jack was here with Gazzoli. So we're going to still tell you about him because he's an awesome kid, too. Jack's is a great example of what it means to be an excellent student at Wilcox. He's very hard-working, driven, and always tries his best. He takes pride in his work and will go above and beyond to learn anything. Mrs. Ritz is very proud of all that Jack's has accomplished this year so far. And what he said about you, Mrs. Ritz, is she gives great hugs and is so helpful. This year, she has helped Jack learn to read by tapping out letter sounds. Whenever her fuss fills their bucket with warm fuzzies, they hit a popcorn party. Mrs. Ritz rocks. And next we'd like to invite up Benjamin Judy in Mrs. Ianni's class. Benjamin is a wonderful kindergarten student. He comes to school each morning with a smile and is ready to learn. Benjamin is an excellent role model and every day follows the Wilcox pledge, being responsible, caring, respectful, and safe. He loves to learn and has great interest in math and learning new math skills. Benjamin, keep up the great work. Benjamin said that Mrs. Ianni rocks because she gives Benjamin extra math that has subtraction in it. She teaches him subtraction by helping him find the missing number. He says, "I like you because you are so helpful." And our last kindergarten student today is Jamison Shortridge from Jamison's precious class. Jamison is rocking kindergarten. He has learned so much and is becoming a great reader, writer, and mathematician. He's a creative thinker and his illustrations are amazing. He always does an awesome job on all of his work. Not only is Jamison a great student, he is also a kind classmate and friend. Mrs. Petras is so proud of him. Keep up the great work, Jamison. Jamison told us that Mrs. Petras always tells silly jokes and teaches her students how to read. She's also really nice and helps her students learn. She helps her students learn new words by sounding and tapping out the letter sounds. And Jamison says, "You're the best teacher in the world." And finally, tonight, it is my pleasure to recognize Carter Jackson, who's a preschooler in Mrs. Ryder's class. And here they come. Carter is a wonderful friend to all. Carter works well in group settings and makes many contributions to the group. She is eager to learn and enjoys helping others. She's a wonderful student. And Carter shared that Mrs. Ryder rocks. Some of Carter's favorite things is when he eats snack, plays, and learns the alphabet. Mrs. Ryder has been so helpful, teaching her students the letters and sounds and also how to wash their hands. It's very important. So we all stay healthy. Carter likes Mrs. Ryder and thinks she is the best. These are our Wilcox Rock students and teachers for March. Boys and girls, so we can get some really awesome pictures of you. We take your certificates and put them this way right in front of your tummy and give moms and dads and family members a huge smile. Okay, now just being silent. Yes, that's a song. He's a new guy.
Well, good evening, everybody. We have a few nerves up here, so we're going to celebrate our kids and their leadership this evening. They're able to do it. They're ready with those smiles. Before we move on to them, I just wanted to highlight a couple of great things that we've had since the last time we've been here. We've had a couple of really exciting dances. We had what we call our Snowball Dance, which was a couple of weeks ago, and then just this last Friday was our Mother's Son Event. And so we are really excited about our PTA and I need to make sure that we give an extra special thanks to our Dallas PTAs that have supported us through many, many different events. And we have a few coming up after spring break as well that you should look forward to, one of which is our art show and our third grade visit. So there's a lot going on as we move through spring break on this first day of spring. But when we come back, there's a lot going on as we finish out the school year as well. So let's give our student leadership an opportunity to share. Are we ready?
Good evening. My name's Aiden. And character counts at George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Now, the following students were selected by their teachers at Dodge because they have represented and exemplified the qualities of outstanding leadership, citizenship, academic performance, and efforts, social skills, and overall accomplishments.
Good evening. My name is Leah Falenberg. The character word for fourth grade students for this quarter is respect. Respect means that we follow the golden rule of tolerance of difference, use good manners and not poor language, are considerate of the feelings of others, do not threaten, hurt anyone, and deal peacefully with anger, insult, and disagreements. The Fourth Grade Students of the Month from Miss Henrady, Miss Rupper, Miss Snyderman, Mr. Summers, Miss Bilcek, and Miss Yaskabowski's homerooms are Prince Bell, Samuel Hyner, Nia Johnson, Neela O'Hara, Nathan Skyanshi, Zachary Zombo, Brianna Wallace.
Good evening. My name is Emma Spakusa. The character word for fifth grade students for this quarter is caring. Caring means that one is kind, compassionate, and protective. It means that one expresses gratitude, forgives others, and helps people in need. Caring students are also charitable and selfless. The Fifth Grade Students of the Month from Mrs. Karilic, Mrs. Reek, and Mrs. Williams' homerooms are Grady Burson, Mary Morgan, and Lola Young.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maya Libertina. The character word for sixth grade students for this course is citizenship. Being a good citizen means you do your share to make your school and community better. You cooperate. You get involved in community affairs. You stay informed, vote. You are a good neighbor. You obey laws and rules. You respect authority. You protect the environment and you volunteer in your school community and community at large. The Sixth Grade Students of the Month from Mrs. Coleman Taylor, Mr. Pulaski, Miss Doffers' homerooms are Amanda Gardner, Carolyn Kennedy, and Peyton Koretsky.
Let's give all of our students another round of applause. And this is a great photo op. Parents and families, so Students of the Month, would you just scoot together closer? There you go. Excellent. Okay. We know at Dodge that we have great student leaders. I want to first just thank our student council members. These students that read up here exemplified everything that they read on those papers that our Students of the Month do. And they do this each and every day and we thank you for your leadership at Dodge and your good citizenship. I also, go ahead. I also want to take some time to just thank those folks that work with them each and every day. Our Dodge staff members, please stand. I'll call you out if you don't. I see you. So, students, thank you very much. And if I can, Mr. Holland, because you talked about the highlights at Dodge, I just have to tweak a little bit and go in with the snowball dance. Do you mind? Okay. But I want to go back to the snowball dance because it's our second year with sponsoring this great event. And for those of you who have been through Dodge and worked at Dodge, you know we have lots of students with varying needs and abilities. One of our teachers that work with some of our students with the most needs is Mrs. Wall. And in working with our students with the greatest needs, these lovely students work with those classes each and every day so that our students understand that we all have abilities and capabilities in spite of some of the challenges that we may have. So at the end of each year, the students from each of these classes at our primary buildings and our junior high building come together with all of the students that work with them all year to have this beautiful snowball dance. And what I love about it, it's an opportunity for all of our students to be together and every child in the building to feel special and to feel the same. So it really is a wonderful event and I thank Mrs. Gail Wall, Mrs. Nancy Kautzman, and all of the teachers that work with them on those teams. So, thank you.
So, thank you, boys and girls. Thank you, Mrs. Huggins. At this point, as we get ready to turn the mic over to the high school, I was asked by Miss Walker, who is the other assistant principal, to just express how much she wanted to be here tonight. For those of you who didn't know, that she broke her ankle, so she has trouble getting in and out of the car, although she is at school every day. And she wanted me to make sure that she wishes all of our students well, as well as the board members. Thank you. This time, this is to the high school.
So I'm going to put this down because I have a big mouth.
At the high school, you know, we have the top lap, right?
We need you to use that. We got to memorialize every word that comes out of it.
Memorialize? All right. So at the high school, we have a tradition of the AAA Bond Rating, where we recognize academics, athletics, and the All-Around Student of the Month. Tonight, however, we kind of rolled the academics and the All-Around Student of the Month into one award because they go hand in hand. But we're going to start with athletics. As you know, we've had a pretty busy year at Twinsburg and we've sent several students on to district, regional, and state tournaments in several different sports. But our most recent athlete that we want to recognize is Caleb East. So Caleb, could you come on up here? So I'm going to make you stand here while I talk great things about you. Caleb competed in the 2019 Division One State Bowling Tournament this past Saturday. His combined score of 665 placed him eighth in the state. I went down to watch him bowl and they have risers and step ladders and piers. I mean, it is quite the... Yes, I never expected to see anything that I saw. But at one point, he had seven straight strikes going. You know, I got bumpers. I'm lucky. And I'm watching him and he is the coolest, most calm athlete out there. He will be tending Lindenwood University in the fall, a Division Two institution, where he will major in, I can't say it, actorial? Actuary? Mr. Aho, I know you love that. Science, which is a component of business, and he will also continue to bowl because they have a bowling team there as well. And the state winner will be his roommate. So they are getting a two-for-one package at Lindenwood. Congratulations, Caleb. You're going to have to come right back up here because there's two more people coming up. If I have to stand up here, you have to stand. There you go. All right. Our All-Around component and our Academic component, we're going to recognize an underclassman and an upperclassman. These are students that are selected or nominated by their teachers, often with one or more nominations, and in tonight's case, both students had more than one recognition from different faculty members. So we're going to start with our Underclass Student of the Month for a goal-oriented. It's Jason Sikora. Jason, you want to come on up? Jason is a 10th grader at Twinsburg High School. He has worked in the maker space since the start of last school year, when he was only a freshman. The teachers that recognize him tonight say they cannot say enough about his mastery of the phrase "goal-oriented." We are often asked by the staff members to create a 3D print that will resolve an issue that they're having and deadlines in which to complete these tasks are often tight. It is Jason who is generally researching and creating the necessary digital design to resolve the issue at hand. Currently, he is perfecting a roller design to replace obsolete parts found in the Dodge bleachers. Once the design is complete, the process of printing the many parts will commence and thus, the goal achieved. Jason has assisted teachers by researching and creating a support mechanism that will hold a digital device such as a phone or a tablet for use on a microscope. He has created a stylus for the science department data collectors. And he's given it when he is given a problem, and his goal is to resolve the issue within the confines of the THS Makerspace. Jason is very detailed, goal-oriented, and gets it done. Congratulations, Jason. Our next student, who also received several nominations, is Arushi Singh. She is an 11th grader at Twinsburg High School. Arushi has taken the most rigorous courses available at Twinsburg High School. Her academic goal is to attend a selective college that will prepare her for a career in computer science and STEM and business through study and internship. She has enhanced her learning by participating in numerous community organizations, including medical affiliations, the public library, Sunday School, and summer enrichment programs, including, and this is where I was pretty much awestruck, mathematical and computational research in biological studies at the University of Chicago, entrepreneurship and team building at Cornell University, a writer's workshop at John Carroll University, a governmental real-world simulation at Hiram College, and coding camp at Baldwin Wallace. Arushi Singh is definitely goal-oriented. Congratulations. So I know, parents, you might want to photo op. We'll get out of the way. All right, thank you.
Mr. Felber, all I can say is wow.
Hard to follow that, but we do have a lot to follow and lots to do on our agenda. But this is usually the time where people want to go home, have dinner, do homework. So it's a good time to go. You're more than welcome to stay.
Congratulations, everyone.
A fairly quiet exit, so we'll go ahead and continue with our agenda. We are at committee reports. Do I have any reports from our committees?
Business Advisory Committee met yesterday morning, 8 o'clock. A couple of things we discussed was previous presentations from Swajlak and Hattie Larlam, and how we can try and leverage those two programs to help our students. Also, talked about Young Entrepreneur Program, a mentoring program, which will be April 23rd, 2019. Mr. Potter has some candidates enrolled in the academy. We'll be taking advantage of that. Learned about some potential companies with internships available, as well as some summer camps, and discussed potential job fairs, and how the district can partner with some of our community partners to, you know, get exposure to our students, both for after-graduation as well as first-time jobs.
Thank you, Mrs. Lurin. I would just give a shout out to Maplewood for hosting our Business Advisory Committee. That meeting moves around, and we have several hosts, and we very much appreciate them allowing us to do that. Do I have any other committee reports?
Yeah, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met a week ago today. And really, the meeting focused primarily on an overview of projects that have been done this year, and also, what's to come for summer, summer projects. So, yes, it's March, but we begin the process of planning and getting contractors together and things like that at this point in time of the year for summer projects, mainly because all construction is starting to ramp up around this time. And so, you know, if we don't start getting our ducks in line right now, then that means further delaying of other projects that need done. So a lot of projects to be done in the summertime. And also, kind of discussion around how that ties in to our master plan facilities. You'll remember, a few years ago, we did a facilities assessment, where a number of areas were identified in need, and they were prioritized and ranked from those that need the highest, you know, middle, and then the low. So we kind of went over those and kind of had some discussion around some of the things that we've kind of been ticking off since that time to where we are right now. So a lot of it is, you know, regular maintenance, warm, safe, and dry. But we like to plan into the future, so we had some discussions around things that are likely to need attention in the next, you know, three to four years, and the processes and planning behind that. So, you know, that's pretty much what the meeting consisted of. Tina's also on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, so if there's anything you might add, Tina?
Not at this time. You explained pretty well, and I'm newer to the committee, so it was kind of, they did some introducing to me of how things usually run with the committee, and caught me up to speed on some things that had been going on in the past with the committee. So just very excited to be on the committee, and just moved over from Policy Committee to Buildings and Grounds, and like I said, just another interesting committee to be on, and a new venture for me. But yeah, you explained everything very well, and I really don't have too much to add for that one.
Anything that you might add, superintendent?
Now, this is a busy time of the year for Mr. Welker and the Department, Business Department, as they begin to secure the contracts for all of the summer projects. So we appreciate the board's subcommittee meeting with us last week. And with this evening's agenda, you can see that we'll begin to have the various contracts up for your approval, so that the projects can be lined up. As soon as the students are out in June, the work will begin. It's a very quick summer for Mr. Welker and the staff here. Thank you.
Any other committee report?
Yes. So I usually take this time to report out on either, you know, activities that are going on at the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center, or in my work as the board's legislative liaison. So I will be talking in my capacity as the board's legislative liaison. I had an opportunity to attend a state legislative conference yesterday in Columbus, and it was hosted by the Ohio School Boards Association. It's a conference that's hosted every year, where school board members from around the state, treasurers, legislators, and so forth, they all come together to kind of talk about what's going on at this current moment legislatively, and more specifically, things that impact school districts throughout Ohio, talking points, and things that the Ohio School Boards Association wants school board members to weigh in on. So I had an opportunity to attend yesterday, and there were many things discussed. There was a lot of conversation around the Academic Distress Commissions. Now, the Academic Distress Commissions aren't something that Twinsburg's directly involved in, but for people who don't know what that is, it's House Bill 70 that was enacted under Governor Kasich, and it allows the state to come in and basically take control of a school district if they fail to meet certain academic indicators over a three-year period. We have three districts that are currently, you know, under state control: Youngstown, Loraine, and most recently was East Cleveland. So the conversation around, you know, the Academic Distress Commission really, you know, revolves around, you know, either making changes to it, legislation that has been introduced to change how it functions currently, and there's also legislation designed to repeal it. House Bill 127, which is sponsored by Representative Kent Smith and Representative Stephen Handby. It's a bipartisan piece of legislation, and that legislation says that it would prohibit the creation of any new Academic Distress Commissions while at the same time making changes moving forward. There's also a bill in the Senate that's been introduced by Nathan Manning that proposes a number of changes that are similar to the House bill. I won't read them, but those are two bills that have been introduced, and just one that was introduced today by Representative Joe Miller and Don Jones, bipartisan, House Bill 154. And that says that they want to completely repeal the law. Okay? So you have three, you know, different bills, both in the House and in the Senate, that are being introduced, and there's been a lot of discussion around it. It's highly likely that House Bill 70 and the Academic Distress Commission, as it stands, will change this year. To what extent, we don't know, but it's pretty encouraging that it's happening in a bipartisan way, and OSBA is behind making significant changes in the law, for a lot of reasons that I won't go into detail. But the law, the way that it was enacted, and how it impacts school districts, and especially boards of education, one of the main mechanisms of the law is that it basically takes control away from a locally elected board and hands it over to a CEO. So a lot of discussion around that. Excuse me. There's also discussion around making changes to school district report cards, and I know our superintendent has been heavily involved in that.
Yes, sir.
In those discussions. I know that recommendations have come out of the State Board of Education, and I know that the Ohio School Boards Association generally supports what has come out of the State Board of Education and their recommendations, and I do know that there are more, there's more that is going to be done in that way as well. So I won't go into a lot of detail in terms of some of the things that were talked about, but that's something that you can look for, that there are going to be some changes that are being made. Just some other points. One of the final things that I want to talk about, as I've talked about previously in previous meetings, and that is Ohio's current system of funding. So the Patterson Cup proposal is what's been bounced around for like the last 16 months? Something like that? So they are wrapping up the plan. A lot of the stakeholders that were involved in the various committees were present yesterday, but Patterson was there to kind of give an overview of kind of what's been going on with that. But essentially, it's a brand-new funding mechanism that, if enacted, will probably be the closest thing to a fair way of funding school districts throughout Ohio since the Duroff ruling. One of the things that he may light up that I actually was not aware of, there are 621 traditional school districts in the state, 300 of which are on the guarantee. So the guarantee is a type of funding, and one of the ways that it kind of impacts the imbalance, if you will, and screws up a lot of how districts are funded, is that the guarantee says that you get paid a set amount of money regardless of what your enrollment is. So if you're a district and you've lost 1,000 kids, you still get paid as though you have the 1,000 kids. You get paid that set amount, hence the guarantee. The flip side is that, is if you're a district like Olentangie, which is just outside of Columbus, they've experienced a tremendous amount of growth. They've grown by over 1,500 kids. But they don't realize the money in that growth. So, you know, they still have to educate the kids, they still have to keep the lights on, but they're not experiencing, you know, the money that they should be. So if you've got half of the districts that are on a guarantee, and the others that are on a cap, like us, you can kind of see how, you know, the differentiation and how it impacts funding throughout the state. So the Patterson Cup bill, one of the main mechanisms of this, I'm sorry, it's not a bill, of this plan, is that it seeks to phase out schools that are on the guarantee over the course of four years, because it would be a shock if all of a sudden that money was yanked away. But at the same time, they really do want to seek that there's more balance and fairness in how they fund school districts throughout Ohio. I'm told that they will introduce their plan on Monday. And, you know, so stay tuned. They're expecting and hoping that all school districts, superintendents, treasurers, you name it, weigh in and talk to their locally-elected representatives in both the Senate and the House. And not only, you know, committees in the Senate and also the House, any and everything is now broadcast live. It's going to be livestreamed on www.ohiochannel.org. So as bills are introduced, as discussions are happening, proponent and opposition to bills, you can now, you know, see for yourself what's being said, what remarks are being made by those that are on the committee, you know, who's pushing what, and so forth. And this is all in the way of transparency that's been ushered in under this new General Assembly. Both the President of the Senate was available yesterday for question and answer, as well as the Speaker of the House was available for question and answer. And then, after the question and answer, we had lunch, and then who weren't there for question and answer, they came and joined for table discussion, for further table discussion. And then after lunch, you were able to go out and, you know, go to the State House and meet with your locally, you know, your local representatives if you chose. I got back on the road to come up here and take my notes and so forth to give an update, but I just wanted to make sure that I, you know, make my board colleagues aware of what's happening, and more importantly, the community at large, that Twinsburg is extremely involved in the conversations in Columbus. We continue to be engaged. I know our superintendent is well-versed in a lot of the bills and legislation that are being introduced, and she serves on various committees as well, to make sure that not only Twinsburg's voice is heard, but, you know, that things are being done in the right way for school districts throughout Ohio. That's my update.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz, and also, special thanks for taking your own time to do this and giving us a thorough update. Maybe you can make those notes available, since I wasn't writing this fast. Is it too early in the process where they'd be requesting testimony, or is that...
Now's the time. So the bills that I just ran off that have been introduced, they are now beginning to have hearings. So they haven't hosted any hearings yet, because it's too early, but now is the time. So if you are interested, and when you do testimony, you don't have to go down and testify in person. You can submit written testimony. I've done it. Superintendent Powers has done it. So yeah, now's the time to do it.
Mr. Felber, Mr. Aho and I have already attended regional meetings about the Cup-Patterson funding. There's another one in April, I think on the 3rd, that we'll be attending. So you're correct, now is the time to start paying attention to what's happening in Columbus. The budget bill is soon to be developed as well, and so you can be assured that Marty and I are on top of these things, and we'll continue to keep the board aware, too, from our vantage point, what we are hearing and what's important for the community members to know as well. Mr. Cruz, thanks for representing us so well in Columbus yesterday.
Thank you.
Nice tweets, too.
We're still committee reports. Is there any other committees that haven't reported? Okay, we're going to move on to F, remonstrance persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card found in the lobby to the treasurer prior to the meeting, so they may be recognized by the board present and welcome to make a comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on this agenda until the board has had the opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the office of the superintendent, although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at the board meeting if there are several that are asked to speak. Each person shall be allotted five minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. Each person addressing the board is asked to give his or her name and their address. And Marty, I have just one. Do you have any other cards?
No cards here.
All right, so the board will recognize Mike Tassello. All right, so the board will recognize Mike DeSello.
My name is Mike DeSello, 11296 Palmer Lane, Twinsburg. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Twinsburg VFW Post 4929. Mr. Solera is a member of our post. I am the chairman of the fundraising committee, or the raffle committee for this year, and we're asking support, and I'm going to be attending, or someone from our post will be attending meetings of all boards and commissions within the city, and we're contacting as many people as we can. We have a raffle that, the ticket is $10, it's good for 12 months. We raffle $100 every month, and the ticket, if you get a winning ticket, it is redeposited, and you can win again with the same ticket. So, we're trying to raise $10,000. Our post and every other VFW post is completely dependent on fundraising on their own. We only get income from our dues and our fundraisers. We had good participation last year. I couldn't get around to everyone last year, but we're certainly going to try this year. The raffle starts in July, and I said, they're $10 apiece. Mr. Solera has taken some to sell himself, and anybody that was interested, if you're interested in buying them, I brought some tickets here for the board, and I appreciate that you're allowing me to speak, and then I have to ask you to donate money.
That's all right, we ask people all the time.
But, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Anyone interested, please let me know.
I'll get them through Mr. Solera, I'm sure.
Superintendent Powers, thank you, too, for allowing me to speak this evening. Anyone interested in buying tickets, I have some here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solera, and of course, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're going to, is that, no, no, that's, well, no, I mean, I wouldn't wait, we've got a lot on the agenda, but we can probably...
You know what I'll do?
Yeah.
Mike, I will get, if anybody wants some, I'll get extra ones from you when I get back, and we'll do it that way.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I wouldn't want you to have to wait all...
Yeah.
We knew Matt wasn't going to let us, Matt wasn't going to let us out anyways.
Okay, got it, I'll get you, yeah.
So we're going to move on to G.
We're good. Okay, just give it to Tim, I'll get it after the minute.
Thank you for your service to our country, too.
Thank you, Mr. Solera.
Really appreciate you.
All right. Moving on to G, Treasurers' Report of Recommendations. I'll read G1. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, the regular meeting of March 6, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion for G1 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DiFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and item G1 passes 5-0. Moving on to H, Action Items Personnel Without Objection From My Colleagues, I will read H1, 2, and 3 together. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit. H1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit. H2, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And finally, H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for H1, 2, and 3 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DiFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and H1, 2, and 3 pass 5-0. Moving on to I, I will read Action Items New Business, I1 through 11, without objection from my colleague. I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following job descriptions as per the attached exhibit, bus driver, substitute van driver, that's exhibit I1. I2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the substitute van driver hourly rage of $14 per hour. I3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Trumbull County Educational Service Center for one student who will be attending a hearing impaired program for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year. Yearly cost is $38,000, that's $211.11 per day, which will be prorated based on the start of the date of the student as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. I4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a settlement agreement, release, and waiver for transportation costs for one student receiving special education services outside the district in the Champion Local School District Hearing Handicap Unit per the conditions outlined in the agreement as sent to the board under separate cover. I5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal with cooperative strategies of Hillier, Ohio for DeJean Richter, I'm sorry, yeah, DeJean Richter of Dublin, Ohio, for enrollment projections and student potential analysis. The total of the contract is not to exceed $18,000 plus reimbursable expenses as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves Twinsburg High School senior Karen Radcliffe to exercise Board of Education Policy 5111, optional tuition-free education F, and remain a student at Twinsburg High School through the end of the 2018-2019 school year. Seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves Twinsburg High School senior Anaya Harrison to exercise Board of Education Policy 5111, optional tuition-free education F, and remain a student at Twinsburg High School through the end of the 2018-2019 school year. Eight, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves Twinsburg High School senior Shay Garad to exercise Board of Education Policy 5111, again, the optional tuition-free education program, and remain a student at the high school through the end of the 2018-19 school year. Nine, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the below-listing items in the agenda to be deleted from inventory. Ten, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement with Twinsdays Inc. of Ravenna Road in Twinsburg to let Annalise board of education property at RB Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermedia School, and Twinsburg High School for the annual Twins Day Festival scheduled for August 2nd through 4th, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. And finally, I11, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves an agreement with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio, 3659 Green Road in Beechwood, to provide in-school programming for students and professional development for staff members effective March 19, 2019 through June 30, 2019, at a cost of $49,400, as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a city-county fund expenditure. Okay, is there a motion for those 11 items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. DiFabio, rewinding the clock. Again, oftentimes, we do have students, seniors, that their parents move out of the district, and the board has recognized for many years that it would be somewhat disruptive for the student to have to pick up after 12, 13 years in our district perhaps, and go to a new school, so we do allow them to stay and remain students. Nice to welcome the Twinsdays yet again, I don't know if this is about the 43rd or something, somewhere in that, in that range. And then, I don't know, I'd ask maybe if you want to touch on the Diversity Center project and Mr. Hill maybe, and the funding part of that.
Yeah, this comes through, being paid with city-county funds, and what those are is the state allocates some dollars that goes through the Cogga County, we're with the Cogga County ESC, they allocate some dollars that goes through there, then the ESC uses those funds to support school districts. This is one of the ways that they're supporting us, is by allowing us to do this contract.
This is a second year, or...
Great, right, this is an affiliation we have with the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio, and a lot of the work that was done last year and into this year talks about students making good choices, celebrating differences, diversity as such, and this is part of our PBIS initiative here in the school district, and we're proud to have the partnership with the Diversity Center.
Excellent. Any further discussion?
Mr. Felber, if I could just indicate the DeJean Richter agreement on here, number five. So, as the Board of Education is aware, about five years ago, the school district actually contracted with DeJean out of Dublin, Ohio, to do an enrollment study, and it is now time to do the same again. As you know, if you've looked around our community over the last several years, there's a lot of development going on, and so this organization will help us to determine whether or not we should be concerned about growth patterns, enrollment, and such. For many years, the school district's enrollment has remained pretty stable, and so this will help us with our planning before, it's part of our strategic planning effort, is to make sure that we have a good understanding of, as far as enrollment patterns and what we can expect in our school district up to the next five years.
Excellent, thank you for that explanation. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DiFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and items I1 through 11 pass 5-0. Moving on to item 12, Board of Education Resolution Authorizing Required Third Grade English Language Arts Assessments in Paper for the Format for the 2019-2020 School Year. Whereas Ohio Revised Code Section 3301.0711, as amended by Senate Bill 216 enacted by the 132nd Ohio General Assembly, authorize a school district to administer third-grade English Language Arts or Mathematics or both in a paper format in any given school year, and whereas it is the desire of the Twinsburg Board of Education for its grade-three students to take the English Language Arts Assessment in said paper format. And be it further resolved that if any student whose individualized education program or plan developed under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, 87 Stat 355, 29 USC 784, as amended, specify that taking the assessment in an online format is an appropriate accommodation for the student, then that student may take the assessment in an online format, and be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized and directed to submit a copy of this resolution to the Ohio Department of Education in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 3301.0711. Is there a motion for I12 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis, explanation by Superintendent Powers.
Well, thank you for your consideration. Board of Education, as you know, for many years now, we have had state assessments online, and also for as many years, there have been conversations, especially with the staff members here of our youngest students, as to whether or not the online format places the students at a disadvantage. Being a third-grade child, taking your first state assessment on the computer is a challenge for some students who may not even have the ability to manipulate a computer, so what are we testing? Are we testing a student's ability to use a computer or a student's ability to master the standards? And so, after a conversation with Mrs. Farthing at Dirther Curriculum, with Mrs. Johnson, our principal over at San Antonio Bissell Elementary School, and then she in turn had a conversation with the staff at Bissell, it is our recommendation evening, this evening, beginning for next year anyhow, for the 2019-20 school year, to administer the English Language Arts Assessment for third grade, back to the paper format. We will maintain the online format for the mathematics assessment, at least for next year, and we appreciate your consideration of our request.
Thank you, and I know quite a bit of discussion went in that, and I appreciate as always, a data-driven decision. You went through, obviously, various administrators and asked them to consult, and as many of us are not educators, we appreciate that. Any further discussion?
I just think, great decision, with, like you said, with, I'm sure, tons of discussion out, but definitely a good decision. Thank you.
Excellent. No further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DiFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and I12 passes 5-0. Without objection from my colleague, I'll read I13 and 14 together. 13, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal with Garland/DVS Inc. of Cleveland, Ohio, in the amount not to exceed $16,987.0 for preventative maintenance on roofing system components at Twinsburg High School, RB Chamberlain Middle School, George G. Dodge Intermedia Schools, Samuel Bissell Elementary School, Wilcox Primary, and the administrative building, as sent to the board under separate cover. This expense will be paid with permanent improvement funds. 14, network upgrades, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a purchase agreement with Twinsburg Network, for Twinsburg Network upgrades, including wireless access points and data switches with Northeast Ohio Network for Educational Technology, of Hi-Hogg Falls, at a cost of $164,624.0 before a 40% E-rate discount per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement. This purchase is contingent on receiving the E-rate funding and is a permanent improvement expenditure. Do I have a motion for 13, 14 as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. DiFabio. Got to maintain the roofs? Chad's not here to go into details, but we know from both buildings and grounds and finance, you know, buildings are getting older.
This is actually, if you remember, this is a maintenance program that Chad had started through this company a few years ago, that had gotten us, what, about three, three years? Three or four years, I think, that they...
On the middle school, right?
On one of the roofs, extended, you know, warranted for it, and this is just essentially redoing that contract again, so it keeps, keeps our roofs, you know, warm, safe, and dry, helps us not replace them as soon, and, you know, they'll come out and fix any minor, minor leaks and issues with it under this contract. So, I mean, it's, you know, kudos to Chad, he's not here and he still gets, still gets recognition, and roofs are, roofs are his favorite project, so...
We're not doing him justice, but he also, did he get more visits built in?
Yes, yes.
He got more than originally...
Right, he didn't want to negotiate against Chad.
At no, at not, at not a higher cost.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and the other part of it that's not mentioned here, Board, you might remember, when this contract was initially approved, there was an infrared study done on our roofs.
Yeah.
That will become part of this as well. There are two ways of doing infrared studies, it's through the air or on, on top of the roof, and this time, they're going to do the study on the roof, because Mr. Wilcox is looking for a complete study and thinks that we have to do it both ways every couple of years, so that will be part of the work here in the summer, just to make sure that our roofs are in good repair and in good shape, because, you know, it's all about warm, safe, and dry, and just like a home, we have to maintain the facilities, the bricks and mortar, so that what we have inside is protected, so we appreciate Chad's effort there, and also...
Protect what's underneath, which is the network.
Right, and so Mr. McGing is here this evening, and Matt's, Matt's the power behind all that we have for our infrastructure, for technology, all of our computers, all the technology that we use in the district is touched in some way or another by Matt McGing, and so I appreciate you being here this evening. This particular upgrade is, is going to help us to really align with our future-ready schools initiative here in the school district, which is a push from the Ohio Department of Education on the right thing to do, because today's educational piece is all about kids and technology, and how we can harness the power of technology to help students learn, and so this is a network upgrade, and we appreciate your consideration of that as well this evening.
Just a point of clarification, the total amount that's listed here does not include E-rate deduction, right? So we're actually probably going to end up paying less than, than what we're looking at right here, right?
Right, so it's contingent on the...
Right, the E-rate hasn't been approved as of yet, so that, there will be an adjustment to the bottom line as soon as, hopefully, we're approved.
I mean, and that's a good thing, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that, you know, E-rate dollars, you know, go along with this, so, you know.
Excellent. All right, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DiFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and I13 and 14 pass 5-0. Would any of my board colleagues... Do any of my board colleagues or superintendent have anything for this?
Just, just real quick, Mr. Holland touched base on it about a couple of events that happened at Dodge this past few weeks. One of them was the mother-son event, and I want to give, you know, thanks to the PTA. They do wonderful things over at Dodge, both they have a father-daughter dance, which is highly attended, as well as the mother-son event, which is highly attended as well. And also want to thank all the volunteers. It's very, over the past four or five years that they've been doing these, I've seen tremendous volunteer effort. There's a ton of moms that help out at the father-daughter dance, and there was, the volunteers at the mother-son event were, I would say, what, about 80% fathers?
Yeah.
Which is the most that it's ever been, so it's, it's really nice to see the community come together in support of the PTA and these students and these families to have these events, and it's nice to see that the fathers are helping out, you know, because they were reaping the benefits of the mother-son, and the mothers are helping out, you know, for the, for the father-daughter dance. So a lot of, lot of community things and community effort goes into making our schools what they are, and the PTA and the volunteers that help out with these many events are definitely appreciated.
Yeah, and I want to thank the PTA also, because I was there with my son, and it was, it was a really wonderful, incredible event, and you were one of the volunteers, and we had some very, very enthusiastic dads who got right into it, and were, I mean, these lines for these activities were so long, and I think part of it's too, because of the, just the, the volunteers that were there, who were bringing the kids in, getting them excited about the dance, and was very, I guess, amused to see how many, and surprised to see how many boys were actually out there dancing, too, with the DJ, and who is also awesome with the kids. But it was just, like, like Matt said, so many mothers and fathers, and, you know, just the staff and everything, especially think the PTA was just a really incredible event, and huge, huge turnout. I'm not, I know the mother and son dance, or father and daughter dance always has a great turnout, too, but this is a huge turnout as well, and that'll be the last time I do one of these, but I was glad to have attended with my son.
Kudos to the pancake breakfast and the turnout. I just wanted to make sure I made some remarks, just so that the board, my board colleagues know that I wasn't trying to avoid not flipping pancakes this particular time. I actually enjoyed it the last time that I was able to participate. I ended up having a schedule change that prevented me from being there, but I heard that it was well-attended. I heard the food was really good, and I heard we, you know, were able to raise a lot of funds for a good cause, so, you know, just wanted to make sure that I made mention of that. Also, I do appreciate the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the, the City Council voting unanimously in support of the levy. I just want to make, you know, a small comment. There were some remarks, you know, made with, with respect to concerns around, you know, the state of state funding, and, you know, the fact that the way that districts are funded throughout the state is unconstitutional. I won't deny that. I want to make sure that the public understands that Twinsburg is not sitting around saying, woe is me, twiddling our thumbs. We're down at the State House, we're talking to elected officials, and we've been doing that over the course of, since I've been on the board, and we're going to continue to do that. Again, I will remind the public that we're on the cusp of possibly having a change to the status quo, that hopefully, beyond this year, it won't, it will cease to be. So I just want to make sure that, you know, people understand that, you know, we're working hard, and we're managing our money the way that we should, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Any further comments from Ms. Laney? All right, the board does have need for executive session. I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:15 to discuss the employment compensation of public employees and the discipline of a student as per Board of Education Policy 01668, and to review negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation and/or terms or conditions of employment per Board of Education Policy 0166E. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a tie, I'm going to go ladies first. Mrs. Davis? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solora?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DiFabio?
Yes.
All right, the board is now in executive session. We do not anticipate further business when we reconvene. Have a good evening.